All right, I'd like to welcome everyone to a regular city council meeting for the Pearland City Council today, Monday, August 9th at 6:30 PM. To get started, if you would mind rising as our city attorney Darren Coker leads us in an invocation, followed by council member Carbone with our pledges to the flag.
Please bow your head. Your father, we just thank you so much for this evening that we get to gather here as a community to do your business, father, to do business of this community, and we just thank you for allowing people to live in a community where they have the freedoms to express themselves here, participate in these public meetings. We just ask that you bless our council members as they deliberate this evening about the city's business, that they do so in a manner that would be pleasing to you, and we just thank you again for this opportunity, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Join me in the pledge, the American flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The state of Texas flag.
I'm on the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
All right, excellent. So with that, we have certification of our quorum, we have all members of the council present tonight, with the exception of Member Perez, who is absent, both from the chamber as well as online, and will be gone the rest of the meeting. Just to note, Member Hernandez, or Mayor Protim Hernandez, is participating remotely. So with that, we will move to citizen comments. We did receive one online, I think she mentioned she would be here publicly, Ms. Rachel Acaba Osados, is she here? And we didn't get an online request from her, Josh, correct? Okay, okay.
That's correct, mayor.
Okay. I know we also tried to reach out about her questions, so maybe we can get in touch with her, with what her question's going to be, and take care of that as well. Next up, we have Mr. Adam Carroll. Mr. Carroll, if you'll state your name and address for the record, and you're speaking on behalf of the PPOA, so five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Adam Carroll, 12-511-Britt, 77581. I'm president of the Pearland Police Officers Association, and so what's brought us here today is the most recent Thursday packet that went out with the salary recommendations from staff. I wish I could tell you that my phone didn't blow up Thursday and Friday, but I can't. So, just to kind of cut to the chase, so the Evergreens recommendation was a 5% for civil service, and we already know, I feel like that was done with voodoo math, and when straight line math across the board, we were 9% below market. Evergreen said their recommendation was 5% to civil service. So the staff's recommendation was a 4.5% increase. I struggle to say that officers were content with the 5%. They certainly weren't happy with it when they feel like they were 9% below market and didn't really agree with the algorithm. Be that as it may, but most of them felt like it was kind of a gut punch that they were content with 5, not happy, but content, and then to have the 4.5 be presented. So digging into individual, I guess, the position salaries, I started looking at what I kind of felt was like a real gut punch to the general, just civilian employee with the city. What I saw as a trend was the basic line level employees for the city, their starting pay went up slightly, but midpoints and top outs went down more than they would have gone up. I applaud staff for giving the step plan, if you will, for civilian employees. I think that is greatly needed for recruitment and retention, and for employees to see where they can go, and there's actually a way to get there. I think that's very important, but it was definitely a gut punch to many of them to see that they weren't even brought up to what Evergreen was saying their peers were. And I think all too often that individuals get lost in the budget, and we think about employees as a group, just employees, whether that's police employees or Parks and Works employees. And what we don't see is the individuals, they get tears in their eyes because they feel like they're not appreciated, that they feel disposable, and that's the word I've heard from two different civilian employees. And I don't know what to tell them, I sympathize with them. I'm the one taking it, and I'm telling you right here now, they do not all work for the PD. And it's, sometimes I think we need to start like an employee association or something, not advocating for that. I've got enough on my plate, so let's not, I shouldn't even have said that, my bad. But I guess they feel safe talking to me because I can relay that information. But I think we do have to humanize this, and that it may be time for, I know the city has a lot of special projects that we do year to year, and it may be time that if this can't, if we can't bring employees up to what the survey says is their peer average, if we can't do that all in one year, then maybe we as a city need to take a step back and put special projects on hold for a couple of years and get right with all the employees with the city, and then continue those projects. I don't want to come with just, you know, complaints. I would like to be able to offer a solution, but I feel to a certain extent my hands are tied, and I want to be able to help. And that's just off the cuff, one of the things that come to mind is maybe we put some things on pause and get right by those individuals that do feel like they're disposable, and quite frankly, some of them feel like the city could just go ahead and undervalue me, let me leave, and replace me with somebody cheaper. And I don't know, well, I do know, I don't think that's the best route to go. So I've asked our members, in the interest of COVID, not to be all showing up at council meetings, and I think we have 20 out at the PD right now with symptoms, so really don't want to have a super spreader event. So please, please believe that there are a lot of employees that are looking at this and concerned with it, and throwing it into your guys' hands. So I appreciate the time, Mr. Mayor, council, thank you.
Adam, thank you for the time, and also thank you for the feedback. And it's, I think it's appreciated by all, and it's appreciated the candidness in it, so very much appreciate it. We'll move on to our first public hearing. So if we would, Mr. Orlando, would you read the purpose of the public hearing into the record?
Absolutely. We have public hearing number one, a request by the city of Pearland, applicant for approval of proposed amendments to the Unified Development Code ordinance number 2000T, so moved.
Okay, and so next, staff report, and I guess staff and applicants are going to be the same.
Thank you, mayor. So this is an amendment to the Unified Development Code to allow for some additional flexibility within that code for masonry screening requirements for non-residential zoning against commercial zoning districts. And this is primarily dealing with properties that are already developed that are existing non-conformities when they come in to replace that masonry fence. So in that event, there are two issues here, that the non-conforming property was developed prior to the adoption of the masonry screening wall requirement. This change was done last year. It previously stated that the screening just needed to be an opaque screen, so now that it is a masonry, this is where that differentiation is. Secondly, it's properties that don't have the minimum 30-foot landscape buffer that would be required. So this statement that is being added into the Unified Development Code deals primarily with the zoning board of adjustment. They deal with variances and special exceptions, as noted on the screen. What I'd like to take a moment to explain is the difference between a variance and a special exception. A variance is dealing with a hardship that is specifically to the use and the development of the property. So these are most typically things like elevation changes, or having a natural feature that cuts through the property that takes away the ability for the land to be developed. Whereas a special exception is a modification to some development standard, or to something that has already been in existence, and then the rule changed, and we're trying to make the best out of what is already existing on the land. Currently, these are the seven special exceptions that are allowed within the Development Code as it stands today. Again, these are more interpretations, allowing reductions, and then allowing additional reviews for off-site parking, reconstruction of a non-conforming building, changes to use, or expansions to pre-existing non-conforming properties, or to allow reasonable reductions based on the Unified Development Code's triggers. So in summary, this is the statement that would be added in. It's to allow a non-conforming buffer on a developed property that existed prior to the adoption of the masonry screening wall requirement, and to install an alternative screening fence, provided that the proposed screening fence is 100% opaque. This was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their July 19th meeting, and the commission voted to recommend approval of that amendment by a vote of 7 to 0. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Martin. Next, on our public hearing, we will reach out to those speaking for or against this proposed change. If you either/or can go to the podium and speak out. Second request for those in favor or against this proposed request, and third and final time, those wishing to speak in favor or against this proposed request. Seeing none, we'll move forward to questions, comments, concerns from council.
Really quickly, what was the necessitating item that brought this up? It seems like a very specific change, and I'm just kind of curious, what was the cause?
So we actually had a permit come through that was applying to change one of their, to change their existing fence. That's when we discovered that this may be an issue for some properties that were previously developed and in a conforming status, and that there may be newer products on the market that allow for the same opacity rating that we're eventually trying to, that we're intending to enforce through these changes that we've made, but also to grant some flexibility to the zoning board of adjustment to make that as a case-by-case judgment call.
Just one other thing, was there a time delineation in terms of around the time of the vintage of the property being built, where you guys started seeing these issues? Like, I'll give you an example, certain communities built pre-1978 are in a very different drainage criteria than something post-78 due to federal insurance rate maps. Is there a certain development timeframe in terms of you started seeing this issue crop up over and over?
Typically, it would be things built prior to 2006, which is the adoption of the Unified Development Code.
It's something to think about.
Yep. Any other questions, comments from council? All right, with that, as mentioned, thank you, Martin, the Planning and Zoning Commission did vote this 7 to 0 as a recommended for approval. So with that, we will close this public hearing and move to new business item number one. Mr. Orlando, go ahead and place new business item number one on the table, please.
Consideration and possible action, first reading of ordinance number 2000T-35, so moved.
We have a motion and a second. We just had questions, comments, as well as staff reports. With that, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
The motion carries 6 to 0 to adopt the first, to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2000T-35.
All right, moving to public hearing number two. Mr. Carbone, would you place that on the table for discussion?
Thank you, mayor. A request by Tricia Cardoso, applicant on behalf of Thomas Area, owner for approval of a zone change from GB, General Business, and Office Professional District to the General Commercial District on approximately 3.35 acres at the general location of 6743 Broadway Street.
All right. So with that, we'll move to the staff report.
Thank you, mayor. So again, this is for approval of a zone change for property at 6743 Broadway Street. This property has two zoning districts currently, both in the OPN GB zoning designations, and they're looking to go to general commercial. This is the zoning and aerial map of the property, showing that it is currently developed, but the applicant has proposed a new development for this property, which is why they are requesting the unified zoning designation instead of the split designation. This is a view of the current site, and then the Planning and Zoning Commission also heard this at their July 19th meeting, and voted to recommend approval of the zone change by a vote of 7 to 0. And that concludes staff report.
All right, is the applicant present? Oh, here we go. If you have a presentation, your opportunity to come and give an applicant presentation, if the staff has covered it, you're certainly able to just say ditto to what they had to say. Okay. He doesn't have a full presentation. In fact, maybe, Martin, do we have the site plan? I know it's in the packet.
If you can give me just a moment to steal the screen, I'll see if I can get it up.
Go ahead and speak into the, make sure the mic is on, and give your name and address.
I only brought the site plan with me.
He's going to try to put the site plan up on the screens for everyone. Thank you for being here. All right, that work?
Yes. We're basically going to build two stiff center on the front to be used as a retail, or maybe restaurant, and then other two on the back, it would be basically office or a house. Total four building.
Okay. Is that your?
That's basically it, yes.
That makes sense. We'll have some questions for you possibly here in just a second. So with that, we're going to allow, open up the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor or against this proposed request. Second call for anyone speaking, wanting to speak in favor or against this proposed request, can go to the podium. And third and final time, those wishing to speak in favor or against this proposed request. All right, seeing none, we'll go to council, questions, comments, concerns. Anybody have a question or a comment for the applicant? The only question I had is it appears from the site plan that this is going to be a teardown of what's there now with the total redevelopment.
Yes, we're going to, just the whole building, and this will be the, I know.
Right. And second question is, I mean, the back third of the property is one zoning classification, whereas the front third is the general commercial, you're just trying to make it all general commercial, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then my last question is, it looks like you've got the proper buffer on here in the front. Just want to make sure you're aware, TechDOT has plans to widen Broadway in that area. It still may be five to seven years out, but you're aware that TechDOT's going to be, you know, widening that roadway, so here's the opportunity to make sure that we develop this with that widening in mind. And want to make sure you're aware of that.
Yeah, we do, I do.
Okay, okay. That's the only questions I have. All right, with that, we're going to close this public hearing. As noted, Planning and Zoning did vote in favor, 7 to nothing, for As noted, Planning and Zoning did vote in favor, 7 to nothing for this, to recommend this particular zone change. So with that, Mr. Member Carbone, go ahead and place new business item number two on the table.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, first reading of ordinance number 2000M-214, so moved.
Second.
We have motion and a second. We've already had questions and comments as well as staff presentations. So Madam Secretary, would you call for the vote?
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
The motion carries 7, 6 to 0 to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2000M-214.
All right, thank you for that. Moving to public hearing number three, just real quick, does Member Hernandez have that in front of him? I'm not sure if you're in a place where you have all the, the screen in front of you.
Yes, yes, Mayor, I do, I see it here.
Okay, would you mind putting public hearing number three, the public hearing reason on the table, please?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Public hearing number three is a request by Luis Urabazo, applicant on behalf of Gero Studio Partners LP owner for approval of a conditional use permit for cigars, tobacco, or e-cigarette shop used within the general commercial district to accommodate approximately 1740 square foot vape shop located in the existing retail center.
All right, appreciate that. We'll move to the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me introduce Mohammed Breama. He's our senior planner and he'll provide the staff report for this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. Thank you, Mayor. Members of City Council, good evening. This application is a request for approval of conditional use permit for cigars, tobacco, and e-cigarette shop within the general commercial zoning district. And the applicant proposes to accommodate approximately 1700 square foot vape shop within an existing retail center, approximately about one acre and located at 1427 Broadway Street. Staff has not received any comments regarding this request. This is the zoning map, shows the property is surrounded by general commercial zoning as well as commercial uses from all sides. The property is designated, this is the site plan, and shows existing building on the property built in 2017. The next slide is a view of that building, built in 2017. The next slide is the recommendation by the Planning and Zoning Commission. They took this request at their regular meeting on July 19, and the commission was divided. Three members expressed support for the request, and three members expressed opposition, and one member, one member was undecided. And that was the staff report, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mohammed. Is the applicant present? Oh, opportunity for applicant presentation if you feel inclined. Thank you for being here tonight. Just name your, state your name and address for the record as, as well, please. Thank you.
Yes, sir, my name's Luis Urabazo. We operate on 13201 Northwest Freeway, Suite 101, Houston, Texas 77040. Just want to state that we are a different type of vape company. We have close to 75 stores currently, we're about to hit 100. We operate out of, we follow law. I'm an ex-police officer, the owner's a police officer. We party, ID, we carry the finest products. It's, it's a different level of, I guess you want to say more of a high end. If you have any product questions, I have our counterpart, Mr. Abdur Shiper, here to answer those questions for you.
All right, thank you very much. We may have some questions for you when we get to council questions and, and comments. So with that, we'll move to those wishing to speak in favor or against this proposed request can go to the podium. Second request, those wishing to speak in favor or against this proposed request. And then third and final time, those wishing to speak in favor or against this proposed request. Seeing none, moving that direction, we'll open it up for questions from council. Anyone have a question, comment, or concern?
I've got one, Mayor, and it's, I think staff said there's two within a two-mile radius or a one-mile radius from where this one is wanting to go in. Is that, is that correct?
There is an existing, there's a couple actually within one mile, one has closed. One is across the street, across, I believe Dixie Farm, that has already closed. And there's one by Berry Rose. And there are a couple more, but they're within like the two miles radius.
Okay. I guess on your presentation, is business that good to have that many close to you?
Yes, sir, we've expanded. And then I, I want to know if that's incorrect because on the planning and zoning meeting, there wasn't one within three miles of our location. That's what was brought up in the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
And this is on Pearland Parkway. We got another one coming up right after this one.
Oh, this one's on Broadway, one on Pearland Parkway is next.
Yeah, and on Pearland Parkway, but on Broadway.
Sir, there's not one within three miles. There is a demand for the products, sir. People are constantly coming in, and that's why we're opening so many. Trying to meet the customers' needs.
And you're just going to be open the eight, 10 hours a day, whatever?
No, sir, they're 24 hours because of the refinery workers, consideration the different hours that they work.
You're going to be open 24 hours a day?
Yes, sir, all our locations are 24 hours.
Do you, do you have that much traffic after 12 o'clock midnight until 8 o'clock the next morning?
Yes, sir, you, you wouldn't, you'd be surprised. About four in the morning, we get a big rush of everybody going to work to the refinery.
Are all these folks coming in legal to go in there during that time?
We ID everybody.
Okay. I'm not particularly happy if it's going to be open up 25 hours a day, to be honest with you. I'm not happy for that. And, you know, I would suggest if you are going to be open 24 hours a day, say from 10 o'clock at night to 8 o'clock or 7 o'clock the next morning, that you have a police officer there just in case. Because I want to make sure the people coming in are the age to go in to do that. And I don't want to, for lack of better things, people coming in half drunk or whatever in your store. That'd be protection for you, but I don't, you know, I'd like to know what is the percentage of people that come in after midnight buy something from vapor, you know, on that.
Good evening, my name is Abdur. I'm a supply chain analyst by profession for Vape City, and I'm also do procurement and do the data analysis as well. Answer to your question, sir. We have almost 25 person across the board of 75 stores where people walks in after midnight till 6:00 AM in the morning. The reason to have a 24/7 stores, it's a lot of R and D we did on this while, before starting it in 2017. We've been 24/7, 2017, across Texas, from east to west. We have stores in McAllen 24/7, Needeland. Exceptions to the malls, all stores are 24/7 purely because we want to have every single customer what they need. We are available. Everything we do, like you talked about the security and the age, it's a standard protocol by the state that 21 and above, all products has to be sold to 21 and above with ID matched. Yeah. Most of our items, I would say 98% of our items have already stated because every product we buy is usually by the proper companies who have been in the industry for more than a decades. All products are scannable, all products comes with a barcode. Every product, what it's made of, have a lab result in it. Even your e-liquids, besides the vape electronic product because it's just a device, anything you consume has all information in it. Everything we as Vape City carries is a standard product, which is, which is maintain a high standard. Nothing is home or hidden race. Everything is there, is there. We, the business is booming. We have one on Pearland Parkway and Beltway, we already have one store. I mean, we have 75, we're already touching 100. We are trying to target every single area as much as we can. As far as 24/7 is concerned, it's been around four years now, and we have no problem. Besides, like I said, besides the mall, all our stores are 24/7, and we don't see any problem so far. Okay.
Well, I, I don't like the idea of it being open 24 hours a day. To be honest with you, I don't think it's that, that necessity.
Is it because?
You got a lot of, like on Pearland Parkway, you got service stations over there, the Exxon and, and Shell, and they sell e-cigarettes or whatever, so there's a little bit of competition there. But in yours, do you mix nicotine with any of your products?
We don't mix it, it comes with it. So we, Vape City don't manufacture anything. We buy from the market, from nationwide, and we sell it from the companies. There is a huge difference than a mom and pop vape or smoke shop than us. Compared to gas stations, it's a completely different industry. Gas station does not even carry, I would say, five percent of what we carry. But if two gas stations can be in the same area, then why not us? It's the variety, I mean, there's a demand, there's a market. It's too, a matter of fact is whether you want to give your neighborhood people to ease to have an access because they're going to go and buy it eventually. There's no way nobody can stop, correct? So why not to give them ease and have it in their neighborhood? It's, you can run our reputation, we go for the prestige. You can look in stores more than visit our websites and see everything in it. And nothing is something which we have, not even once, I think we have any ticket on our name. We have followed the rules by the book. Our CEO is a cop, our general manager here is an ex-cop. We follow the laws very strictly. Myself has graduated from the University of Houston as well. We literally take everything very seriously. We follow those laws as much as we can. Whatever law is there out, we follow that. Everything is required by the state, we follow that.
Well, I was just wondering from our staff point of view, can there be coverages over the windows or do they can't put cover, any kind of cover in the window, anything at all? And do the doors have to stay unlocked?
So the corridor overlay district, which Broadway is a part of, allows for up to 25% of the windows to be covered. So they, they are allowed some window advertisements, but it cannot be a complete coverage of all of the windows.
Yeah, how about locking the doors? Do they have to be locked or can they, do they have to stay open? Or does that make any difference on one of these?
The Unified Development Code doesn't cover locking doors. I believe that's more in line with the fire department and accessibility for the venue.
Usually standard code by the fire department is to have it unlocked. And like I said, even 24/7, you walk into our store at 3:00 in the morning, it will be unlocked. It will never be unlocked.
The thing about it, I mean, you know, that's, as far as I'm concerned, you know, the, the business is a business, but I don't like the 24 hours a day. So when this comes up, vote, I might have to vote against it.
Gas stations are 24/7 too, right?
Yeah, it's not a gas station.
Any other questions?
It's an industrial requirement.
Any other questions, comments from council?
That may or may not be, or should be there.
Member Little? Member Kamkar?
I just want to get some clarifications on a couple items. You're going to be open 365, 24/7?
Yes, sir.
Christmas, Thanksgiving, major holidays?
24/7, 365 days a week. We've been like that for the last four years, something.
And you all have a location elsewhere in Pearland, is that correct, or in the general vicinity?
It is outside the Pearland limit. We have one on Pearland Parkway and Beltway exit. We have this for almost a year, if I'm not wrong. Yes, a year.
How's business?
Great. It's booming very honestly.
Where's your signage? You have a diagram of what your signage is going to be for your facility?
For Vape City, sir?
Yeah, like what is, I'm assuming you're, you're renting space and you're going to have a sign that, or you're?
Yes, we do, and it says Vape City.
Do we have an image of that or something we can see? Does, is that part of the application?
So signage typically isn't something that is a required document for, for a use to come in. The Unified Development Code covers signage and it's the standard in between.
So it could be a tasteful puff of smoke then, possibly.
Don't get to say what is or is not.
I just, we just don't know, but it could be a tasteful.
It's a, it's a very standard red color Vape City.
Okay, that's fine.
I mean, I can pull up or you just can Google Vape City and it's going to pop up right there.
Fair enough. I, I'm going to struggle, I'm going to end up where Mr. Owens is. I just, I'm glad that business is good. I'm a capitalist, but, you know, this is not the first one we're talking about tonight. And I feel like there's enough is enough. And at some point, a city has a right to decide what it wants to look and feel like, what it wants to appeal to. And I just, I'm not hearing a whole lot of things about why this is appealing besides the fact that I can get my nicotine hit any time of the day, day or night. And that's just not, getting my nicotine hit at 3:00 AM is not important to me.
It's a convenience factor. It's, it's, for us, it's an expense factor, for your end.
I, I respect your time, your energy, and your effort. I respect the service as, as former police officers, I respect all that. I'm just not going to get there. So I'm just, I'm just, I just don't, when you're, you're selling it on Christmas at 3:00 AM, I mean, some things are holy, not a lot of things, but some things, and I just.
You're more than welcome to inspect any day.
Your thing, I bet you guys are complying until you're not. But right now, you guys are complying, and that's fine.
It's like gas station, does gas station close on the Christmas?
I know, but I need gas, I don't need to get my nicotine hit. And you being argumentative with me isn't helping the discussion.
Understand that.
Member Hernandez, you were unmuted here just a second ago. Were you?
Yeah, thank you, I just wanted to, I've said this previously with other vapes, vape shops that have come before us, and I'm just not seeing that adding additional vape shops to the city of Pearland is really in line with our brand. I just don't see it in our vision or the vision that I have for our city. So I'm, I'm going to be a no this evening, but I appreciate the applicants being here this evening.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, I'll go. I just want to say I appreciate you guys being here. I, I think it's really important to be thoughtful about considerations like this that we're making. We're, we're talking about two really important considerations, people's private property rights against the interests of, as was kind of mentioned, for citizens to shape their community. So I, there's a lot of other things about timing or about signage, whatever, that are, are less important to me. I think it comes down to that kind of core fundamental thing. And so I, I'm just going to shoot it straight with you. You know, we, we have these kind of rules in place on several kind of different issues, whether that's things related to smoking or drinking. Of course, we have very strict laws against, that, that essentially prohibit sexually oriented businesses just because we believe it's important that a community's value should get to shape what it looks like here. And it's, it's become very apparent to me over the last several years that the people of Pearland hold vape shops, and of, of course, they're relatively new phenomenon, right? But they consider vape shops to be closer to that category of, of like a sexually oriented business, something that we don't want more of in the city. So I, I say that with all due respect, speaking to, you know, somebody trying to open up a business and the, the property owners there. But, but I, I think that the people of Pearland have spoken pretty clear on that and, and made it clear where they stand. And so I'm not going to be able to support this project, but we appreciate the time and the fact that it's, it's not a black and white thing, so thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Member Carbone?
Yeah. I mean, I, I don't smoke, I don't need a hit at any time, but it, you know, I own property and a lot of us own property, and I, I respect those rights. And it's a, it's not an easy one. But we got strip centers here, we just approved a zoning here in the last read for another strip center. And they're, they're going to come to try to fill it up. If not, we're going to have vacant strip centers, so. And as we've seen with, with other vape shops, the competition can drive some out of business. And that's, you know, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm going to, I've, I've got a side for the, for the market on this one. And I think Adrian, Councilman Hernandez in the past has mentioned, you know, it, it's not a specific use build out inside. I mean, it's, it's general retail, you're going to throw some shelves up, maybe some display cases, I don't know. But it, it's not like you're putting gas pumps and tanks in the ground. And we've got some factors if it doesn't work. So that reason, I'm going to side towards the, the market and not dictating up here what, what hours and signage and everything can look like.
Fair enough. Any other questions, comments? All right, we're going to call this public hearing to close, and we'll move to new business item number three. Member Hernandez, would you place that on the table for consideration, please?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Consideration and possible action resolution number R2021, CUP 21-00020, so moved.
We have a motion and a second. We've had questions and comments from council as well as a staff report. Madam Secretary, would you call for the vote?
Member Hernandez?
No.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Owens?
No.
No.
Remember Orlando?
No.
Remember Carbone?
Aye.
Remember Kamkar?
Nay.
Motion fails four to two.
All right, moving to, uh, public hearing number four. Uh, remember Kamkar, would you, uh, read into the record the reason for the public hearing?
Uh, public hearing number four, request by Levine Cross, applicant on behalf of Grace Business Center owner for approval of conditional use permit for cigars, tobacco, or e-cigarette shop for use in the general business district.
All right, yeah. Um, so we'll end the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, again, we'll let Mohammed Brema, uh, discuss the staff report for this application.
Hi, thank you, Mar- Martin. Uh, so this application is a request for approval of a conditional use permit for cigars, tobacco, or e-cigarette shop within the general commercial zoning district. Accommodate approximately 1,200 square foot vape shop within an existing retail center, uh, on a property located at 1853 Pearland Parkway. Staff has not received any public comments on this request. This is the zoning map. The property is located within the general business district of the Stonebridge Bridge Plan Development District. It is surrounded by commercial uses from the west and south and residential from north and east. And on the future land use plan, it is retail offices and services. This is the existing building, uh, where the vape shop will be located. It was built in 2017, I'm sorry, 2007. And the next slide is a site plan that shows existing development with the location of the vape shop, uh, shown with the red rectangle there. So it's gonna be in the middle of the retail center there. And the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, held a hearing on this one on the July 19. And five members of the commission expressed support, uh, two were in opposition. And that is staff report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mohammed. Uh, moving to, is the applicant present? If you wouldn't mind, your applicant presentation, state your name and address for the record for us, and welcome here tonight.
Good evening. My name is Levine Cross, and our, um, address is 1853 Pearland Parkway, Suite 111. Um, I just want to clarify and start off by saying that we are far from a smoke shop, a vape shop. Um, we have no nicotine or tobacco in our stores. Our vape line is probably 10% of our sales. The rest are oils, health and wellness. So we don't really, I'm not sure why we're in this category. So I'm just clarifying that. We're far from a smoke shop, far from a vape shop. Um, no nicotine, no tobacco. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Yeah, we'll, uh, have some questions maybe in just a minute if you wanna hang out right there. But we, we appreciate you, uh, being here tonight, okay? All right, uh, moving forward, uh, those wishing to speak in favor or against this proposed request can head to the podium. Second request for those wishing to speak in favor or against this proposed request. And third and final time, those wishing to speak, uh, in favor or against this proposed request. Seeing none move that direction, we'll open it up for council questions, comments, concerns? Anyone who got anything? Remember Owens?
And I, I think I spent most of my questions or asked on that at the beginning. But in this shop, uh, do you sell anything else beside that? Do you sell any kind of, uh, uh, people or stuff though for the people that do smoke or whatever? Any kind of...
Yes, so we, um...
I don't know what it is, that it can be used for something else.
So we're, we're considering ourselves as a CBD superstore. And so what that is, is, um, we sell everything from pet supplies, um, oils, edibles, beauty, men products, face products, bath bombs, you name it, we have it. So as far as our vapes, they're not even 10% of our actual sales in our store.
So any of the other stuff that you sell, can it be used for anything else? Is it like a pipe that can be stuffed with marijuana or anything? Do you sell those type of things in the shop also with the vetting?
Um, so our hemp flower, some of our hemp flower and our products do have the legal amount of THC, which is .3%. Um, the rest are CBD. Some of our products do not have any THC whatsoever. It just depends on the customer and what they're trying to help. I mean, we help people, um, with high blood pressure, anxiety, depression. Um, we've helped a lot of people so far. We've only been open a month. So it's, I mean, some of them do have the .3%, but we have our hemp license. Um, we're by the state. We're signed up for them. So we're legally allowed to sell the products that we do have in our store.
I know, it's just like we said on the other one, where you're located at down here, then certainly the sale, you know, the Shell and Exxon, if you go in there, you can buy the e-cigarettes and all of that stuff.
Right, but we're, we're totally different from the stores. We sell, we choose not to sell nicotine. We will never have nicotine in our store. There's too many stores for that. Um, we will not never, ever sell tobacco. There's too many stores for that. We have e- every, literally everything has CBD. If it doesn't have CBD, we do not sell it.
Do y'all have any other vape shops in around?
No, sir, this is our first store. Me and my husband, we opened it July 1st. Um, my husband went to a store that was around here, and he got some CBD that had, I don't know what it had in it. It was bad. And so it was just sad to see that the community can do this to regular people. And so that's where we came in to play to, before the people, not just for a profit. It gives me a peace at night when we can help somebody versus trying to make a profit and not helping that person. It eats me up, so. That's, I mean, that's how we differentiate ourselves from other CBD stores, other companies. I haven't seen anything like what we sell in Pearland or even in Houston. I'm not sure if you've Googled us or we have a website of all the products that we do sell, but we try to have an environment that is for everybody. So we don't wanna be intimidated, because most of the smoke shops and the vape shops that I've been to, I'm intimidated. I don't wanna walk in, because you can't see inside the store. Um, you go in and you don't get help that you're needing. So we're just trying to be something different for the community.
Are you gonna be open 24 hours a day?
No, sir, I have four, we have four kids, so it's not in our genre right now.
Yeah.
Me and my husband are the only ones that are working there right now. So we are 11 to 10, Monday through Sa- Saturday, and then Sundays, we're open from 12 to 8.
I'm trying to get the police department some extra off time places to work. So he'll quit coming up and asking for me. Oh, well, I appreciate that, that, uh, you answered my question on that, and I appreciate it.
And so I just wanna point to, um, I did get pulled over the other day, and a police officer, he just didn't know what it was in the car. And so he said that this was his first encounter, and we're here to help everybody. So I mean, anybody that wants any information, if there's confusion about something, me and my husband have done a lot of research, um, a lot of stuff that can help anybody. So we're not here just to sell anything. We're here to help people to understand what it can really help with.
Okay. Any other questions?
Do we have any kind of plug back in there if they get...
Just, uh, I admire your, you and your husband's entrepreneurial spirit. And, um, you said that the vapes only rec- um, represent about 10 to 15% of your sales.
Yes, sir, and I do have a vape in my purse if you would like to see it. It doesn't have any... It doesn't have any, like, some of them, you need accessories to use it. This one, it doesn't have any accessories, so we don't have an excess amount of vapes. It's just one pen. That's it.
Okay, so you're, you're already open. I guess someone found out you were selling vapes, and then you had to go and apply for it.
No, sir, we've, um, we applied for our, um, CUP before we opened.
Okay, all right. Uh, well, thank you for coming out. I don't have any problem with, with approving it.
I appreciate that.
Could I get some clarification, eh, eh, how this specific situation came about? Where, I, I think you understand what I mean.
Correct. So, uh, their shop is a general retail store that sells CBD items. Uh, when it was further discussed about what, uh, the products were, that's when, uh, we concluded that the conditional use permit would probably be an appropriate measure, uh, to go through for those products.
So my understanding is that we have other, that a CBD shop in and of itself would not necessitate a CUP, is that right? That we have other CBD shops that have opened without requiring a CUP?
Correct. The CBD is a general retail use.
Sure.
Uh, as, as defined, and it is not specifically regulated apart from general retail.
It wa- it was our understanding at, when this application came in, that the vape portion of the store was a larger percentage. And, and, and then, and from our understanding, it rose to the level that a CUP would be required. From what we're hearing now, we would, we, we could ask and speak with legal about that. But originally, our understanding was that vape material would, would be a larger percentage of the sales.
And that was my concern. I'm sorry to butt in.
Sure.
We, we did tell them several times, like, look, this is under 10%. I mean, we have our documentation of what we're selling and stuff. And we have so much product, these vapes. It's the one company, five different flavors. That's it.
Could you give us an idea maybe of some of the other types of products you sell? On just CBD products and whatever else makes up kind of your inventory?
So we sell oils, and with our oils, we have about...
When you say oil, that's...
So the tinctures or the sprays that you can put under your tongue, and it helps you get, um, rid of the anxiety, depression. Um, uh, some of them just get you through the day. Um, but there is about, I wanna say 10 cannabinoids and 17 different oils. So just the oils, we have about 25 different, different individual oils. Um, for our edibles, we have chocolate, popcorn, gummies. That is about, I wanna say 25 different companies right there. Um, we have our beauty. We have a line of women beauty, men beauty. Um, and that's probably about another 30 different products. And our vapes, we have five vapes. Five different flavors.
Just, so, I'm a Texas Aggie. I'm real slow, and it takes time. So your business is functionally open, like, we're gonna go, you went today and you opened the business?
Yes, sir.
And people bought stuff from you?
Yes, sir.
So why are we here again? And this, just explain to me, guys, like, why I don't...
I just feel like I'm robbed out of my money. I'm so sorry. I'm not...
No, no, that's fine. It's, it's, I, I bet it's not your fault. So explain to me why... So the lady's shop is open, and she went through this whole process at one point. Is that correct or not correct? Like, her business got a permit to open.
The CBD portion of the business is an allowed use in the retail shopping center where she is located. Under that, under the previous conversations with staff, it was, uh, determined that the conditional use permit would be appropriate.
At what point? Okay, so there's a timing issue there. So at some point, she got the chance to open. At what point did the CUP...
Correct, because the CBD store is an allowed general retail use, which can be open when, uh, appropriate inspections and appropriate permits have been applied for, granted and approved.
And when was that, just for the reference, when was her approval for her permit date wise?
I don't have the specific date.
Because we got it right before we opened July 1st.
July 10th, you opened her business, is that correct?
July 1st.
July 1st, okay.
Yes, sir. And our, our vapes are, are CBD, so they have no nicotine in it. They're CBD.
And that's, that's fine. So then what, at what point triggered that we had to come back here? I know, I get, like I said, I'm an Aggie. You gotta talk real slow, preferably monosyllable.
Luckily, I'm an Aggie too, so we can, we can talk the same language here. During that conversation, uh, with...
What was the date of that conversation?
I don't have that information off the top of my head.
Was it, okay, was it before July 1st?
During the application process, it was discovered that it should come through for, uh, the conditional use permit due to the products being sold. It wasn't until later on that it was discovered that it was such a small amount of product being sold.
Then if I could follow up on there, do we have, uh, some kind of guidance in terms of what revenue percentage is, triggers, you know, being as significantly a vape shop versus just a general use retail store?
Uh, typically, the guiding line is anything that's, uh, over 50% of a store's, uh, business.
Gotcha. So then would it be an opportunity here, and maybe I'm speaking to the, maybe I'm speaking to the city attorney? Um, but, eh, w- would it be possible here if, if it seems maybe there's a miscommunication at some point? And this, let's say I didn't want to approve this to be a place that sold over 50% vapes, but I'm comfortable with the business she's operating now, because I, I don't see how you wouldn't be? So i- is there a way to, um, can we just not take action on this either way? Maybe refund her her application fee and allow her to continue her operations as normal?
I think that's definitely a possibility. I think what I would do is, um, since right now, I think, some of this, I think staff feels like they're maybe learning this evening. I don't know. Or did you learn that more recently?
Uh, the applicant did make a presentation, uh, at the P and Z.
Okay, or at the P and Z, so at the public hearing there, so. Um, but based on that information, if we can get confirmation and writing from the applicant with respect to the amount of business that's generated from the, the vape products. Because, uh, I mean, if you look at a lot of convenience stores, they obviously sell vape products and are not required to have a, uh, conditional use permit. So I think that's something that could be done. And if, uh, if the council wanted to, uh, postpone this item.
Yep.
Pending confirmation of that, and then, uh, then it could possibly be removed from any future council.
So that, yeah, I, I think that's probably the direction I would wanna go in. You know, I, I appreciate the kind of difficult position in, in some ways that we put our staff in of, of this kind of arbitrary, yeah. What, like I was saying earlier, I think it's a fair thing, but it's, it's a community value. And, you know, where do you draw the line precisely? So I don't need dates or anything, and, but I, I do think there was some kind of miscommunication. Um, and it, it sounds like based on this, we have an already operating business, that there could be many other operating businesses that you go into and get CBD products, and it would never come before us. So it just seems like putting an obstacle in, in this, uh, business owner's path for no reason. So I'm gonna be in favor of postponing this, um, and allowing, and refunding her, her fee as well, and allowing her to continue. Um, and thanks for being here, and congratulations on your, your recent opening.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that's a good, uh, a good way to move forward. Any other questions or comments from council? Seeing none, I'd, I'd like to go ahead and close the public hearing, uh, and certainly thank you for your time. As far as new business item number four is concerned, um, I'd, I'd like to know. We've, we've heard from one publicly. Would, we'd like to postpone that to a future agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to postpone new business item number four.
I, second. So I, I guess we have to vote on a postponement, yeah? So let's just go ahead and, and vote on the postponement.
And Darren, for clarification, I guess, would, would we need to clarify at such time that the percentage is verifiable or something along those lines, or just the next regular meeting?
Could, could I postpone indefinitely unless our staff has an additional issue?
It, it can be postponed indefinitely, uh, and, uh, that's gonna, uh, re- require a super majority of council. But, uh, and you may wanna qualify that with the indication, uh, pending the, uh, the applicant's provision, uh, providing of information as discussed in the meeting this evening with respect to the other operations of the business.
Okay, I think that's as I understood it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Remember Hernandez made that, uh, motion. I think we had a second to postpone it.
Is that with the additional language?
Yes.
Yes, okay, a second.
Just get real quick. No nicotine, no cigarettes, right?
Never. Never, ever, ever.
All right. Uh, fair enough. So with that, Madam Secretary, let's call for the vote on the postponement.
Remember Hernandez?
Aye.
Remember Little?
Aye.
Remember Owens?
Aye.
Remember Orlando?
Aye.
Remember Carbone?
Aye.
Remember Kamkar?
Aye.
The motion passes six to zero.
All right.
Do I stay after, or do I need to stay after?
What was that, Ms. Cross?
Stay after? Oh, okay.
He'll get you.
Thank you.
John will get with you. Thank you for coming down tonight. We appreciate it. All right, moving forward in our agenda, we have the consent agenda. Uh, Mr. Little, would you place the consent agenda on the table? Before, I think you wanted to remove item F, as in Frank? Is that correct? Any other items to be removed? Hearing none, Mr. Little, if you'd place, uh, item A through H minus F. We have a motion in a second. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Remember Little?
Aye.
Remember Owens?
Aye.
Remember Orlando?
Aye.
Remember Carbone?
Aye.
Remember Kamkar?
Aye.
Remember Hernandez?
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero to approve consent items A... The motion carries six to zero to approve consent items A through H with the exception of item F.
All right, we'll circle back to F in a little while. Moving to new business continued, new business item number five. I'm going to ask Member Owens to place that on the table. And when he does, immediately after putting it on the table, we'll get a second. We're also going to turn around and amend it. And the reason is, we actually received word late today that we're receiving a few more dollars and we need to amend it to add the additional dollars to it. And our city attorney is going to read what we need to do for the amendment. So, Member Owens?
Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R 2021 dash 168, so move.
We have a motion and a second. And now, Mr. Coker.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. As the mayor indicated, Mr. Hardy informed us this evening that he had received late notification that the, that the city had been, had received an additional $6,700 for its allocation, which was not included in the original notification. So Exhibit A is, is a, well, there is an Exhibit A to this resolution and that Exhibit A had contemplated a set amount of money. And so we want to make sure that Exhibit A is amended to reflect the additional $6,700 allocation. And with the understanding that those allocations will be distributed proportionately to the percentages that they were already distributed under the current allocation plan.
Okay, so we need an amending motion. Member Owens, if you would?
On the, amend the motion? Consideration Possible Action, amend the motion?
So move. Right? I heard him say so move, so. We have a motion and a second. Now we're into staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So you've had the required public hearings and discussions about the program year. This is our, if you will, regular community development block grant funding. And as was discussed, the new number is 462666. And so looking forward to getting after this and doing a series of programs around the community, everything from code enforcement to mental health services, partnering up with an agency in town, youth services, rent assistance, and then a little expansion over at the NAP centers. So this will solidify that and make the changes and, and we'll be able to start administering this under the federal rules. Nothing to add.
Yeah, and just, this was placed at everybody's spot before the meeting. And, and like you said, this was late second change that we got this. Just wanted to make sure that everybody had the opportunity to take a look at it. Any other questions, comments, concerns from council?
I've got one question, Mayor, on the, I guess $76,500 salary and benefit for the one position. Is that right?
So that's one of our program managers and they work with the housing rehab and they'll be working out of a community development shop coming up.
Okay. All right. My question is, if that's the case, is this a reoccurring cost that this won't be picked up through that grant anymore and we have to put it in the budget process?
We, we've had this program for years and so long as we have that, it needs to be administered and this would be the way to do it. So we have other grant programs and when those go away, whether that be in, you know, different areas and, and we'd have to decide if we want to continue it or not. But for the not time being, this program year, it continues.
All right, so this would be something that this amount that $76,000 would pay for the one year. And then after that, that becomes a budget item, a reoccurring cost out of the budget.
No. So as long as the program year, as long as the program continues, we'd have this. We'd decide if we want to. There's no automatic that would come out of the regular funding after that.
So it comes out of recurring CDBG funds, is that correct?
Right, but those are allocated each year annually, what you're doing right now.
Okay. Say, may I just clarify, is there an FTE? Just kind of, we're going through budgets and FTEs or is there, is that an FTE?
So it shows in our table of organization? Yes.
That, okay.
If it's grant funded, yes, sir.
Okay, but essentially it comes from the federal government?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, the questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we call for the vote.
Okay, so this vote is on the amendment?
On the amendment. And then we have to turn around and vote again.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Kamkar?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero.
So now we have an amended motion on the table that we have to now vote on. So Madam Secretary, we'll call for that vote.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero.
All right, thank you. I know that was a little bit of gymnastics there with the, with the agenda item, but when you get a word at about four o'clock in the afternoon that you got more money coming, you got to do what you got to do on Monday. So at least we got it, at least they got, let us know before, before we voted on it, Joel. So we could get it done. Moving forward in our agenda, back to you, Member Orlando, place item number six on the table, please.
Sure, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action, first and only reading of ordinance number 1497 dash nine, so moved.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report?
Nothing to add, sir.
Any questions, comments from council? Changing school times causing?
I'm sorry, we, did, did we vote on the other, the CPG? I'm sorry, apologies. So, so just to reintroduce, I apologize. This is our school zone, time changes and the school districts apparently changed their start times. We had to hustle and review that. So we did adjust those, so it'll be applicable with as close to the start of the school year as possible. So we've been working with both the Districts Alvin and Pearland ISDs that have facilities in town and came up with this. And so we're ready to go on this. This will be a first and only.
Yeah, and I, I meant to state this is a first and only because it is dealing with traffic, especially with school zones. So any other questions, comments, concerns from council?
Yes, sir. Just real quick on the, going through the packet, different school zones at different times, somewhere 30 minutes, somewhere an hour, somewhere an hour and a half. Kind of varied. Just for education, what is the driver on that?
So Robert had those discussions and I think you'd probably be best positioned to talk about that.
Councilman Kamkar, thank you for the opportunity to answer the question. With regards to that is that we usually have a 45 minute span on an individual school. So 30 minutes before the bell, 15 minutes after the bell for the morning session, and 15 minutes before the bell in the afternoon and 30 minutes after. But however, if they're crossing multiple jurisdictions between an elementary and a junior high or elementary, high school, junior high, you're going to end up spanning the whole thing. So for example, Robert Turner High School also spans Pearland South Junior High. So now all of a sudden that spans to that 6:45 in the morning, goes from there. Or you have an elementary and a junior high where we have that situation located on Kingsley with McNair Junior High. And I just drew a blank on the elementary school just north of there. But that road on Kirby will have a longer time versus the one on, on Broadway. So that's to answer your question, is multiple jurisdictions of schools.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little? Member Owens?
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero to adopt the first and only reading of ordinance number 1497 dash nine.
All right, moving to new business items, actually seven and eight. Member Carbone, if you would place both them, both of them on the table, they're related. Staff's report is around both of them and we'll have to vote on them separately, but we can talk about them collectively.
Consideration Possible Action Resolution R 2021 dash 171 and 2021 dash 172, so moved.
We have a motion and a second for both, both resolutions and the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is a follow up to our CIP discussion that we had and we spent quite a bit of time talking about the respective utility water and separate wastewater master plans and had a good discussion. But this, the formal acceptance, we want to get in the record and Mr. Upton has an overview of those for you right now.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. This is a continuation. We had this more formal presentation during one of our CIP workshops for water and wastewater. So I've summarized that up in a quick summary here, just so that everyone in the public also can see the, the work that we've been doing. So we'll talk a little bit, planning with a purpose, our water and water model and wastewater master plan model, both overview real quick, and then showing some upcoming priorities and milestones as we go along. As we, as we do with everything, we need to take and, take a look at planning with a purpose and starting from the very beginning of how we get there, from our strategic priorities that you have laid forth, to our comprehensive plan. And these two models, both the water and wastewater master plans augment and bring that in to the comprehensive plan to help guide us for development, help guide us for improvements as we see this development coming forth. So we took a look on our May 17th update series with you. We presented these overall pictures of these plans, the infrastructure needs, how we got where we, we got, the history of the water models and the wastewater models. Took a look at both of them. We forked, these models forecast, taking a look at the comprehensive plan, the land use plan, the zoning plan. Takes a look at all these to bring in that population growth, to see where we need to look at rehabilitation or rehab or system expansion. As it states here, is taking a look at some of those deficiencies that may come as a result of growth, but also become, because, just because of age, age of the system itself. So for our water side, this is just an overall picture. It's a great tool to show all the information and all the inputs that are necessary to help develop our model, make sure it's accurate, providing these outputs as pressures or hydraulic grades or even water age of the, of the water in the system. And then showing the calibration necessary to make that happen. And that includes testing and pressure testing out in the system to calibrate this model so that we have an active and real life model that we can use on a daily basis. Also utilized with development too, as they come in to show if there's any offsite improvements necessary as a result of a very large development, because that may put a strain on a booster station or a pump station that's necessary that we need to be able to upgrade. Overall, we took all of our system into play. This is our water supplies by wells, also showing our future of our surface water treatment plant and also our two offsite sources, Shadow Creek Ranch and also the Alice Water Plant, receiving both of those from the city of Houston. Also taking a look at our above ground and elevated storage tank capacities and also what we've planned for in the future as well. This just gives an idea of some of the model, the larger version of the model outputs. We currently have a single plane. That means everybody's on the same, same pressure zone, pressure plane. And you can see the pressures ranging from 45, 55 PSI to 55 and 65 PSI. So we have a well balanced system currently as it's designed. Pressures are sustained through the system. That's what the modeling will show. This kind of shows some areas where we can take a look to, look at improvements by how long water line, water is in the pipelines and be able to look at areas for looping, be able to make sure water is circulating correctly. So this is another tool in that system. Takes a look forth at our max day demands. This is a, a long-term planning tool. We take a look at build out based on the population, how, how much water are we looking at using and utilizing based off our current demands that our system utilizes today? And then moving forward, we took a look and said, okay, based on these demands, based on the outputs, based on what we're seeing in the water model, taking a look at what kind of projects are we looking? So this was put in and utilized to help develop our capital project, capital improvement program and develop those projects as we move forward. Of course, surface water treatment plant is at the top of the list because that's in process and moving forward. Several of the others are taking a look, excuse me, rehabilitation of our pump stations to meet what those pumps need for the demand that we need in those areas. And continuing on, we look, look further ahead, distribution out in the system itself, not just the delivery method, but also how it's in the pipeline as well. Taking a look at optimization of projects and then of course, water quality is another one, age of water. Moving on and taking a look at our wastewater system, we took an overview, took a look at it. We have over 70 lift stations in the system. As you're aware, five water, five water reclamation facilities, 400 miles of gravity for, gravity lines, well over 10,000 manholes that have to be monitored and looked at. It's broken up. This is how our wastewater is broken up by zone and service area. Utilizing the model that we did during, during the development, we also put flow monitoring out there where we were able to monitor both dry weather events and wet weather events in the system. So we were able to capture and determine where we may have infiltration and intrusion in the system from rainwater, where we can then define projects that are necessary to tighten up, as we call it, the system to reduce that rainwater infiltration. Also taking a look at where areas are undersized based on the capacities and growth and setting forth this process to be able to improve our system with regards to our ability to serve our customers. And this is all reflected in our capital improvement program. We did a risk-based assessment on all of our lift stations. Actually, we only did 61 because we have 70 in the system, but nine of them had been either under contract or recently rehabilitated. So those we felt were good. So we evaluated the other 61 and this has set forth our priority in our capital improvement program to be able to start that rehabilitation of these lift stations. They are aging and they need to be addressed so that this priority was used to set that forth. Again, breaking it down further, these zones were then taken a look at based on the flow monitoring that was done. And then we're able to capture that information, comparing it to dry weather to wet weather, seeing where we may have that infiltration and set the priority levels so we can go address them as quick as possible. So taking a look at our master plans to CIP, as we talk about, we talk, take a look at regulatory based on capacity, ongoing testing, our permit limits. We look at growth. We also then take a look at operations and maintenance. What's it cost us to do those things? How do we maintain it? What are we seeing as a result? Our system is aging and we need to take a look at that and, and realize that we do need to reinvest. And that's what these models help us show and help us do. So at this time, thank you for your time. Thank you for listening to our presentation. Again, if there's any questions, be happy to.
Just to add, Mayor, hopefully those graphs are familiar to you. Like I said, we did spend quite a bit of time on that, but wanted to bring these back and have you at least consider this, these resolutions to adopt these so we can refer to that in our plans going forward. Thank you.
Yeah, and these are just the, these are the, both the water and wastewater model that we're, that we then in turn use as our planning tool moving forward, correct?
You are correct, Mayor. That is what we do.
I mean, obviously more and more, you know, projects are derived from these, you know, planning tools, so.
Correct. And as, and also as projects are completed, they're reflected in the model as completed, then the model updates. And so we take a look on it. Moving forward, we're looking at an annual basis to update that model based on the work that we do through the CIP and then continue to enhance and then that'll continue to direct us as we go forward.
Okay. I know I had, I know we were looking at a potential alternative to Berry Rose. Is that reflected in the model? Is that something that would add to the model or how would that be reflected?
Mayor Cole, that currently is being handled on a separate avenue based on that because this model setup is what's existing today.
Right.
Okay, that any changes as we move forward, we'll look at that. So we will be modeling those scenarios as a separate entity and be coming forth with that request for that authorization at upcoming council meeting.
Okay, real good. Any other questions, comments? Member Owens?
Yeah. Robert, on this, do we know actually how much water that we're using per day right now? Do we have a number on that?
Yes, sir. Hold on one second. I'm going to switch off of this, Josh.
Not max of, not max available, but how much we're actively using? I think is what you're.
Let's just move on to.
So Councilman Owen, based on some preliminary numbers, what we use on, I'll go by monthly. So for, for July, total water production that we had, it was a 431 million gallons in July. And that was for 31 days.
Yeah, so that's 31 days through there. Okay. Yeah, the reason I was asking that, you know, it, we look like when we're going through this process, 44.5 million gallons a day and at present, and that's not counting the freshwater plant. But really, the concern is that I have, when we look at it, we've got Hargrove going on and then we've got the freshwater plant and Berry Rose is kind of up in at it. So just those two are about $248 million. And then we've got, say, another 99.5 million on the CIP. So we're getting very significant numbers. Do now, do we know what that's going to play on the price of water that we're going through here? We're adding probably close to 350, 400 million dollars over the next five years in our enterprise fund, you know, just for those, those items. fund, you know, just for those, those items.
I'll start out, yes, as we've shared several times, that each of the rate models incorporate that capital improvement program. They're all very well linked in terms of the CIP, the debt issuances that are required. So the multi-year that you saw last year anticipated that we would need a revenue increase for this upcoming year. And that follows, we were able to reduce it from what was projected. And each of the subsequent, the CIP that you have, the rate model that you have, does include that CIP. So it is extremely large, like you said, relative to city of Pearland, but that's been built into the models.
Okay, yeah, because that's, that's getting to be quite a bit of money on the enterprise and, you know, the system, the only thing we can do to pay those bonds off is selling water. So that's why I was asking about the number of MGD per day. And I'll go back to one of our conversations we had talked about previously when we started this and running the line that we bought into with the city of Houston over there for $40 million and then the price of water. That's what opened up McCord Road through there. And the whole point was, was to reduce that amount that we're getting from the city of Houston and over there because the rate increases continues to rise over the last five years. And what the city of Houston is looking at doing now and what they're putting into the water supplies, we can expect on that one amount of water that we're pulling over there is every year from now on, we will get an increase in the water out of the city of Houston. I think that's pay or take, one of the two coming out on that side over there. But we were supposed to be able to offset it when we put the money that we bought into the plant, the southeast plant over there because of the difference in the price of the water that we paid to get into it. So I don't know if that's still a point that we, we've looked at.
So Mr. Pearson's meant, when that's been brought up in the past, you know, that the water supply and the cost of water was a factor, as I understand, well before my time, but it also has to do with reliability and being, and quantities that are needed. So, and the pressures. So I don't know if Trent, you want to talk about that whole thing again?
Sure. I'd just say that, you know, that, the take points you're talking about is the most expensive water that we have available to us. And, you know, the entire system works together. And so, you know, we reduce that amount that we take during the winter months when we don't need it. In the summer months, we do need, need that at this point when we have our surface water plant online about a year and a half from now, then we'll, our reliance upon that will go down even further. But peak demand day shows that we'll still need that water as part of our overall supply.
Well, have you looked at it from the standpoint, I know that we're building out 10 MGD surface water plant, that was something that we can go to 20. Is it, and the cost through there, is there something that we could look at if we did go in and increase it up to 20, could we cut out the 5 million a day over there that keeps escalating in price?
It's something we're looking at and part of the overall system. There's, there's kind of a lot of factors in that and that's based on our, our water that's available to us right now to be able to go to that 20 MGD. And, you know, kind of the, the cost of increasing to that 10 MGD versus what we pay for that water there. But, you know, it's something we're, we're looking at in the long term. But when we finish this first 10 MG, MGD, that should keep us in good shape for really only using that on peaking days in the summer months.
Yeah, because we know that the water in Houston, they've already said it's going to go up billions. And that's with a B. So we know that, you know, the only way they're going to pay it for that is coming in and charging, you know, on the users.
Any other questions, comments from council? Remember?
Just a quick comment or question. During the winter months, when, are we able to, once we're up and running with the 10 million gallons additional capacity, will, we have any ability to sell water to some of the surrounding communities to pay off some of the debt?
So I wouldn't look at it from a winter months versus summer months ability to sell water because municipalities don't want an interruptible supply of water where we tell them we can sell it to you now, but we can't later. But it is something we've had conversations with of when we do expand that plant to 20 MGD, if we, you know, we see we may have some additional capacity there where we could partner with somebody on that second, or that expansion of that plant.
Right.
A lot of details to work out there when we've got more solid.
Yeah, I would just offer that.
Things to bring back.
It comes up quite a bit and those conversations, the door's been open, but nobody has taken it. And, you know, our plant costs a lot of money to build and so we've said, you know, there needs to be an agreement and there's been no commitments by any of those other cities for any kind of volume or, you know, willing to pay up for that. So that's an option down the road, but, you know, we need to do what we need to do for Pearland right now, so.
Member Camp Car.
Here, Upton, you, you referenced the July water, which is 131 million gallons, which 31 days for the public's use, 13.9 million, gross up number. What is that? Obviously July is a summer month, but it's wet. What is that number that you kind of threshold every day or per month in terms of use just for the benefit?
So there's a couple of things looked at when we take a look at the water model. Okay, so the water model has to be based a lot when we do this on peak day demand. So they require, TCH requires a three year look back on your history. So when we did the last water model and we got this moving and shaking, is that that rate was at 225 gallons per capita per day. So the water model was set up there based on ultimate demand because it has to handle peak day demand. Our average day demand at that time was 125 gallons per capita per day. And you have your minimum or low demand when you're talking your winter months and we're talking in, probably about 75 to 80 gallons per capita per day in the winter months. So you're, you're, you're using all of that demand and those type of curves as you're developing the model. That's the beauty of the new models these days. They're, they're active and diurnal curves and you're able to create that versus a static, which is a single snapshot in time. You can create a living model this way with the new technology.
And just all of the items in that presentation, previously in the CIP that we discussed two weeks ago, it more or less approved. Is that, I remember that correctly?
Yes, sir. These items reflect in there. We made sure that they were matching when we were working on the 2022 budget.
And then staff and head count are rolled in to those numbers, i.e. the new water plant, the staffing on that and the other adjustments, staffing is rolled into that number. Is that correct?
Staffing's rolled in as an O and M. It is not rolled in as a capital expense. It's rolled in in the capital, in the, when you look at your capital budget book or your CIP budget book, it's rolled in as an O and M expense, not in the project.
Okay, just because I, we're, we're starting to crack the books on that. And I started, I think the surface water plant, I think has four or five FTEs that are being requested amongst other, you know, for the team. So, okay. If we approve this update, then we're recommitting to the CIP read just two weeks ago. We're essentially saying, here's the five year plan going forward, more or less, and that would only be reaffirming whatever's produced from the budget or the build out of the rate, things like that.
You're, on the resolution approving this is allowing that we're acknowledging that we have a, a water and wastewater master plan model to be able to utilize a tool that you all support as well, simpler to, similar, similar to the multimodal plan that you all approved many months ago. We're using that and having your backing when we use that and work with developers, work with the public and then working also with our CIP. Doesn't mean that you, this is the be all and end all, but this is a tool to allow us to use that you recognize and approve.
And one last thing, when is the update traditionally for this? When we read, we take a hard look and start over and relook again? Is that every three years or five years on this or how often is this?
Model intent right now is that what I, what is planned in the budget that I requested was to take a look at this every year. We have an on-call contractor that we use that will pick up and do special projects for us or things that we find in our system that need special attention. We have an on-call services that looks at one for the wastewater and one for the water model because they're separate consultants to be able to look at that. And then we would be looking at an annual to every or at most two years because the system is changing.
And to add to that, I think traditionally you've always looked at these periodically, but with the newer technology, you can really keep that model up to date with what's in the system, what's being built. And it makes a lot more sense for us to be able to look at what's being built as well as look at what needs to be done when you keep it updated in that manner.
I'm really glad to hear that. It sounds like we do have a plan to keep fresh eyes on it just with how we talk about class and comp, how we talk about certain other studies and keeping that as regular as possible. And it sounds like in this instance, we're staying very regular every, what, 10, 12 months? If not 24 months, the worst it sounds like, which is good. So, thank you guys.
Questions, comments? Remember Hernandez, anything?
Yes, Sir Mayor.
All right. With that, we will turn to vote on these. First, Madam Secretary will consider item number seven, R 2021 dash seven, excuse me, dash one, seven, one. Call for that vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Camp Car?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero to adopt resolution number R 2021 dash one, seven, one.
And then next we'll consider resolution R 2021 dash one, seven, two. Madam Secretary will call for that vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Camp Car?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero to adopt resolution number R 2021 dash one, seven, two.
All right. With that, we'll move to Member Hernandez. If you would place item number nine on the table, please.
Yes, Sir Mayor. Consideration possible action, resolution number R 2021 dash one, seven, three. So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a pro forma item that you need to pass for formally placing the upcoming budget hearing on your calendars. And then we'll, after this action, they'll be published in the paper of record following this. With an ad.
Kind of per factoring, we're into the budget time of the year. So here we go. Any other questions, comments?
Mayor, I apologize. I, if I, sorry to interrupt. When we were drafting this, we made a mistake in the fiscal year.
Oh.
Was noted incorrectly. So when we created that, that, that was our bad. So it's a Scribner's error. We'll correct it in the final resolution that you execute, but I just want to make that note.
Yeah, and I wanted to make sure from the public's perspective, the caption here is correct. There was just a typo in the actual body of the resolution.
Resolution, yes, sir.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Hernandez? Member Little?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Camp Car?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero to adopt resolution number R 2021 dash one, seven, three.
All right. Moving forward, Mr. Camp Car, would you place number 10 on the table, please?
Yes, Sir. Consideration possible action, resolution number R 2021 dash one, seven, four. So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So with the calendar this year and our meetings, this comes a little bit earlier or actually before we even have our first budget hearing. But this is a mandatory resolution for consideration and this is saying the maximum rate that the council could adopt with the upcoming budget. Again, this would be published in the paper of record. The amounts there, because we have not had any kind of feedback, it's, it's, we have to give you the maximum flexibility. So it's a higher rate than we are proposing in the budget. It's higher than what we actually have now. But again, this is, you could set that a little bit lower. We actually have that a little bit below the no new revenues. So there wouldn't be additional public hearings required. And Amy's got a, CFO, Amy Johnson's got a brief PowerPoint to explain some of that. So, Amy.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Tonight we have before us the resolution that allows us to set the tax ceiling, which means that council can then work to bring the tax down, the tax rate down. And that's what we plan for and expect that you will do. But we have to go ahead and publish the max amount that we're considering. And so that is what the resolution will do tonight. And the vote tonight just gets us started on the work of prioritizing the city needs and setting the appropriate funding in place. So we have the no new revenue tax rate of .735485. The voter approval tax rate, which is .737016. And the proposed maximum tax rates for the purposes of publishing, which is what you are voting on tonight, which is .735484. The property taxes, it appears in the proposed budget, which you all had delivered on Friday, is actually .70825. That's lower than the current tax rate. It's lower than the no new revenue and it's lower than the voter approval. While we won't have any public hearings for the tax rates, they are not required with the rate that we are currently proposing. We will still have the standard budget hearings that are required by state law and that's what you guys just voted on this evening. Senate Bill Two has brought us a few challenges and changes, so we have been working through that and trying to understand the, the new laws and regulations as they come about. So that is what got us to this tax ceiling proposal that we're doing this, this year. And then this is the calendar of events that is coming before you for action, either on the budget or on the tax rate. Tonight, we're voted, voting just on publishing the proposed tax rate. This Saturday, we'll have our first budget workshop. And on the 18th, you will see the advertisement for the proposed tax rate in the newspaper. August 23rd, at our next regular council meeting, we will have budget discussion number two. And then on August 30th, there's a public hearing on the budget and the budget discussion if it's needed. We will have the hearing, the discussion is if needed, to clarify. And then on September 13th, we will have the first reading of the budget and the first reading of the tax rate ordinance with whatever council proposes as our tax rate. And September 27th, we will have the second and final reading on our budget and our budget adoption, as well as the second reading of the tax ordinance. Are there any questions?
Okay. So that concludes, concludes staff report. So we'll open it up to questions, comments, concerns from council. Seems like this is just kind of getting out and this is the max it could possibly be, even though what we have already received is lower than that.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
I, I don't know, two and a half.
So on this one, Mayor, we can't go above this number, but we can go below it.
That's correct.
That's correct.
It's, it's setting a ceiling and we can be under it.
I feel better.
That's correct. Yeah. So, and, and if I understand, either Amy or Clay can, can explain this, by going ahead and setting this now, it helps our calendar on the backend as opposed to waiting another week or so to.
Right. I think we actually, because of the calendar and the, when the public hearing is, we need to pass this tonight. That's where we kind of got stuck in between. And then I don't know if we could have technically done it on Saturday, but rather than trying to do that on a special meeting, we just thought it'd be more open to do it here, so.
Member Carbone?
I guess the question is, we could lower the ceiling tonight. I mean, that, that is an option. I'd be in favor of that. I don't know if anybody else would be, but I guess why, why go for the higher ceiling if we know we're not going to use it, but I don't have heartburn either way.
The only question maybe, I mean, would we be able to get the required language on the resolution? Because there's that, things they say about the down and the percentages in the actual resolution. If they change it, we'd have to recalculate it. The state, as you've seen over the years, they've got this weird formula. So I don't know that we, if you wanted to lower it tonight, I don't know what we would put in for the percentages on all the factors that. It would have to be calculated.
I, I, I think the discussion around staff was this would be a ceiling. We have a proposal that's, I don't know, two and a half cents or so below this. And I think because we may have some discussion at the council table on step plan, those types of things, that number may massage a little bit. And I think that's where they're coming up with. This, this meets the definition of the law, no new tax, no new, what is it? No new revenue, no new revenue tax rate. And so knowing we're already below that, I think there's a reason why they, let's, let's publish this and then expecting it to be below is kind of what I gathered from, we still have council, this, you know, discussion and workshops and whatnot that the number may massage a little bit. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Camp Car?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Aye.
Member Little? Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero to adopt resolution number R twenty twenty-one dash one seven four.
We're back to matter matters removed from the consent agenda. Member Little, if you would place item F, as in Frank, on the table, I appreciate it.
Consideration impossible action resolution number R twenty twenty-one dash one five nine, so moved.
Second, we have a motion and a second staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As is described, our fire station two has experienced some soil shifts issues and it's causing associated plumbing problems. And so this particular contract is just for the design to take a look at that and give us a solution out of that for both a close look at the the ground conditions and then the associated work that would be with the plumbing. This is not getting at the some of the other building issues we have identified, but it's limited to primarily that plumbing problem. So nothing to add.
Questions, comments?
Yeah, I I pulled this item, if I can borrow a line from Councilman Carbone. I still have a hard time wrapping my head around the fact that we've got a fire station that's five years old and another one is three years old. And we've got to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to fix things that appear to be design and construction defects. That's my question is, what are we doing to pursue remedies against the engineering companies and the construction companies that are responsible?
So, Trent, correct if I'm wrong. I think we'd say that these particular parts, this issue is not what we would think of as a design issue on the on the back front end, I should say. You know, there's the soils conditions, it was tested, nothing's showing up right now. It's not to say we won't be pursuing or looking at that closely, but I think this is a different category than some of the other things that you're referencing, so.
I I think that's accurate. And Robert's got more details on the real specifics of it of what we looked at. But we've looked at the geotech work. We've looked at the testing reports from when it was built and did not see anything out of spec or did not did not meet the specifications. Of course, if we discover anything differently there, we'll consult with our legal department as to what our remedies are there.
Is there any way to check that the actual geotechnical and soils work? I mean, it it may have been designed within the specs and, you know, of the of the actual geotech reports. But how do we know the geotech report is correct?
I'll let Robert confirm this, but I believe when we went back and redid some geotechnical work, we were able to confirm that what was shown as the soils in the original geotechnical work was consistent with the soils we saw when we redid the work.
Mayor and Council, Mr. Epperson's correct. We went out and actually did five more cores after the fact. So we drilled through the slab, we drilled through the areas that had on the exterior because we wanted to look what was inside the building, but then also on the exterior lime was there. It just appears that we've had more water or we've had ability to get water away that has affected even deeper in the subgrade than what would have been part of the normal building envelope. And so we are feeling some of that soil movement, but it's not the building. The building is not moving. We looked at the piers, the pier depths, the pentrometers. I can go all the way down the detail of that and the rebar and the concrete strengths, but all that was looked at. We've had third-party forensic look at this as well. The building's not moving, it's still staying the same. We surveyed it. We did our own geotech again on five different boards. So therefore, we're looking at just it's the subgrade below what was prepped and met the specification that was done. And we need to probably needed to be done deeper than what we had, but that's what the materials passed and test six and a half years ago or yeah, six years ago when this was built.
Mr. Epperson, really quickly, what I've remembered, didn't we make some adjustments in the mid-year budget allocation to address? There was like two or three different repairs. One was like ACs and one was something else. What is the scope of that adjustment, raw? It's like five, six hundred thousand dollars, right?
Correct. Correct. The aspect is is that there's two components. You're looking at two different fire stations as you're asking that question, Councilman Little, Councilman Kamkar, and trying to isolate that. We have two separate situations. You mentioned AC. Those are the situations that we are working on and reviewing with third-party for design issues and concerns with regards to the soil and the soil movements. Expansive soils were there, both in the deep side. The geotech reports, we even had the original geotech come back out and look at his reports and look at the soil samples from the third-party geotech that we had. Everything's.
Who was that, just for the record?
So Geoscience did the original and then we had Robert Kistner come out and do our our investigation or the city's investigation.
Keep an eye on Geoscience. And what is the closed loop out of this? What is the learning item that we learned out of all this, I guess?
There's a couple of things with that with regards when we get done is to make sure all the drainage flows away. If you take a look at this design in regards to that is that water's moving all the way from around the site, creating an island to an extent and then getting to the detention pond and then flowing out. It's also taking a look off-site to make sure that everything flows off-site. It's stated in there in the report too or in the agenda request item is that there's also some additional off-site work that we have done and looked at a future CIP project as well.
I just I appreciate it. I'm I have the same concerns, Councilman.
Yeah, I mean, if you if you paid half a million dollars or more for a custom-built house and five years later, your concrete slab is moved up two inches and dropped in other places, you'd be suing the builder and the engineer on that. And there are remedies out there for residential, maybe according to Darren, that it doesn't apply for commercial buildings. But it seems like there would be some maybe express or implied warranties of suitability for the purpose of which it was intended. And five years and we're spending millions of dollars on these projects. And then, you know, five and three years later, the taxpayers are on the hook for another half a million dollars to fix problems that, you know, soil movements, nothing new to Texas, but.
I've got one on. Robert, y'all y'all looked at this, so there's nothing wrong with the original geotech report. There's nothing wrong with the the design as it come out. There's no problems with the design that was that was in there. There's nothing wrong with the geotech report. It's all.
Everything, everything was built in accordance with the plans and specifications as developed by the geotech report. And we've taken a look at the compaction test. We pulled the history, we looked at photographs, we looked at what was tested during the material that was put in. We've we've done, we believe we've done that due diligence. Now, again, as Mr. Epperson said, if we're during the design process on this to remedy this, if we find something else in error, then yes, we will try and do our best to take any recourse and work with legal as necessary. But as of right now, both the evidences show that what was put in the ground is what what was put in the ground on the outside slabs. Remember, this is outside the building envelope. So this is your driveways and approach slabs were built in accordance with the plans.
Well, it's it was built by the design on there, but this was the design right. That's what I'm getting at because, you know, I'm sure we reviewed those plans at thirty, sixty and ninety percent on there. So we're saying that the design was correct and the builder built it according to the design. But we're still getting that flow on there. Is it are we, you know, the the drainage there, was that washed back underground or or was it channeled off to where it should have gone to? There's got to be something to it, you know, one of the two things we're wrong.
And that's what we're continuing, as I said, it doesn't stop here today. We're continuing to evaluate and and like I said, we spent our significant resources to the point where we need more help. And this is one of those avenues that as we move forward to be able to design, to continue the investigation, continue to move forward. If we find that there is an issue associated with a design flaw or a design of of significant nature that warrants that, then we would continue to work with legal to figure out the remedies necessary. If everything is in compliance and moving forward, then we have to make those decisions.
I think, you know, it may be too far out of date for the legal aspect of it. But what I'm saying is they don't come back to the table. They've done their best job here. You know, if we do find a something that wasn't right, we don't need to bring them back and do work for the city apparently anymore where there's geotech or where it's the design, one of the two.
But I I guess that's I guess that's the question I've got. So we had an original geotech report, geotech, you know, soils report done by one firm. We've had that, we've gone back out and looked at it ourselves with a second firm and they matched. Is that correct?
They both showed the expansive soils and the nature and they both showed the lime that that was treated and the the fill offsite or engineered fill that was brought in to bring that side up. Right, so we're talking this is a deeper movement than.
And then we've got a structural, you know, either engineer, architect, whatever, that designed the slab and it was done within accordance of the geotechnical report.
That's correct. Now, please remember, this is not the building slab. This is this is the exterior slabs. So this is your approach slabs, your driveways. We're not seeing this on all of them. We're seeing it in the front one, which is the exit out onto Fight Road. Okay, and then also we're taking a look and getting to be able to move moisture away from our roof drains and get those out away from the foundation of the building as well. I'm sorry, Councilman Owens, I did not hear that.
No, I I was just asking, who was the builder on that fire station?
Crane Development was the builder. BRW was the designer.
Yeah. But again, if the builder built it according to the specs, I mean, that the builder builder did his job. So, yeah, he performed his he performed his. I mean, is has anybody, I mean, tried to figure out why this would be? I mean, you mentioned something about water around the site. Explain that again, how?
So with regards to that site in particular, there's a detention basin located at the corner of Fight and Harky. But around the outside to the north, it brings water and has a larger swale.
There's a church, there's a church on the north side. There's a swell between the two properties.
You are correct. And then there's it brings that wraps it around as the high point being what would be that northeast corner and brings it around the north to the detention pond and then from the south and then on the south side of Fight Road underneath, water goes underneath the driveway, brings water over and then into the detention basin. The detention basin then discharges to the underground system in Harky and then flows south on Harky down to Mary's.
So just just weird question here. So we've got joiner architects to come in for design services on this. Is are they going to be looking at redirecting water? Are they going to be looking at 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 the actual concrete work?
So there's there's multiples of phases of this project, one being the concrete flat work. What we need to do to make sure that we don't have or we try to address the movement in the driveways in the future after we replace the said panels. And then two is also is that the roof drains currently discharge right to the foundation and we're going to be repiping those and getting them out to the detention pond to move it away from the building so that those are out of the way and away from the foundation. And then to address sanitary sewer lines inside is to be able to go down inside the slab, put an expansion joint in if there's any future movement to allow that sewer line to move up and down if necessary to keep that the toilets on the floor.
Answer my question.
Mr. Epperson, I just want to say, we got to do this. We're going to we got we have to end up doing this. The part that I struggle with and it sucks because they performed, right? Everybody's performed is like we're this is like the string that's going to keep pulling and the thread's going to keep going. Because eventually there's going to be one of the recommendations and it's not going to be six bucks. And the unfortunate thing is we've got, we can't even do the sidewalks. We're missing a million dollars. We need to go do those sidewalks. We need to pay our folks effectively for the work. And it just this feels like an unforced error. And I would just ask from a process point of view that we red-team this. Assume the geotech is wrong, assume the design is wrong. And I know it's hard because you can red-team and blue-team until you're blue in the face. But at some point, it was like an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure, except this is probably going to be like hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of cure and it's only going to be able to perform like it's originally, like we don't get more value. And it just it's just a real sucky situation. And I know we're in it and we just have to deal with it, but I don't know where the process is internally. But I would just ask that we red-team more. What is defective? I when I know we hire good contractors and good engineers, sometimes they make mistakes. And this is just this is going to end up being a very expensive mistake. And we have to hire a joiner for eighty-one four just to kind of figure out what is the fix. And it's going to be expensive and that's the part that sucks.
Yeah, it is. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, Madam Secretary, we call for the vote.
Sorry about that. Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little? Member Owens?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero to adopt resolution number R twenty twenty-one dash one five nine.
All right, moving further, there's no other business. There's no other mayor council issues for this council discussion. And so at eight twenty-six, we'll call for adjournment.